I will call our meeting in order, it's 5:32. Michelle, roll call please.
Steve Aaron.
Here.
Danny Workmeister.
Here.
Jeanne Ira.
Here.
Cole Baker.
Here.
Carol Hongkong.
Here.
If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number two is approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Any comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. All right. Item number three is our public forum for anyone who wants to speak for items on or off the agenda. Are you signed in?
No.
Okay, but you can, you know, go ahead and come up here, please.
I'm coming to speak on our ducks. I have a petition going for people around town. They just want to have it added to the, to the wardens. Because I know, I know a couple that they actually want to take a couple of our ducks in town, just for their pond. So, I mean, there's no, no hurt of having them in town. There's not much difference between chickens and ducks and raising them, one's finer than the other.
So the person that wants them for their pond, they live in town, though? But they have to be enclosed, don't they? Or don't they have to?
They have enclosure.
Oh, the pond does?
Ducks.
Ducks we can't have, chickens without.
Yeah, but I'm saying if we added them, they would have to be enclosed.
All depends on whether it's changed with. Point of order, aren't we in public forum?
We are. Oh, sorry.
Can I not ask questions?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. I mean, it was Abby Hansen. One of our ducks kind of wandered over to her pond and she really kind of wants one for her pond. So, I mean, you want to say anything, Grayson?
I don't want to say.
So you say they have a petition, is that, are you going to drop that off with the clerk today?
We can't, I mean, I can, I mean, I had it hanging up at Casey's where I, my other job and been asking all of our neighbors around us that, that maybe, you know, see if they would oppose that, you know, having the ducks around. And they're all for it. They don't see any hurt, you know, they love hearing them at, you know, in the afternoon when they're in their quacking. You know, when we do release, when I do release them out of the pen, they usually stay within our yard, because I usually take them, put them into my garden so they can eat. Eat the bugs and wasps and stuff that are flying around. So, you know, like I actually said, I cut, cut down a lot of the bugs in my garden last year, just so I can eat.
All right, thanks for your input.
You bet.
We'll take your information and advisement. Let's see, anyone else here for public forum? You didn't receive anything?
No, no.
We'll move on to item number four, city announcements. Michelle, please.
Okay, branch pickup is May 9. Anyone who needs branches picked up, then call the city hall and get on the list. Another reminder, junk days is May 12. Friday, you can't start, put things out till Friday before. And mowing has started, and just a quick reminder enough to blow your grass clippings into the street.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Item number five is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda unless a council member wants to remove any items.
I'd like to pull out, read one, approve claims, there's just a couple of questions I got.
We will hold that to be our next agenda item after the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding the per viewing claims.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. Okay, our next agenda item will be under approved claims. Entertain a motion to approve claims or questions?
Do you want to motion first, or? Okay, I make a motion to approve the claims. Three items, just wondering what they are. The first one is mosquito control spray for 20, almost $2,200. Is that by contract, or?
Wait, let's get a second for.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, thanks.
This is from last year. And they sent us a bill for over $5,000. And I told them I would not pay that until they could justify $5,000 for the few times they were here. They kept sending me the bill, and then finally they came down to this, this amount.
Okay, and this is a good number, you think, then?
It's not great.
No.
They were here three times.
And that's what they ended up telling you to?
Mm-hmm. There's never been a contract, so I don't know. I have no idea how many times that they, they're supposed to come because there wasn't a contract. Other places, other mosquito control that have said once a week. You keep everything under control.
Yeah, or at least every other week, for sure.
Right. And, you know, they blamed the flood, and then they blamed that super mosquito bill.
So we've got to go ahead and pay this one since it's on the claims end and work to get a different provider, or?
We definitely will get someone different.
Okay, all right. Then I saw that police guard was in the, must have been in the shop.
Right.
$3,000. What happened there?
Missed back in the pool out here, out back.
Okay, accidents happen. Nobody was hurt, I hope?
No, no.
Or the pool.
This is pride.
That's not the first thing that thing's been hit either.
And then the last one is on the second page, $16,500. Is that part of the switchgear project?
No.
Sunbelt Sullivan.
By the school.
That's a transformer for the school.
So those are fully separate projects from our switchgear then?
Yep. And that, there's another one for?
38.
$38,000. And we're just going to approve to pay this, and then the school is going to get billed minus 10% because we are going to be taking
I remember, yeah.
the old transformers. And the one we're going to put out at bunkers to get rid of the overhead there. And then the bigger one, we're going to probably just use for backup in case, we don't have a three-phase backup in case something goes out in town, so.
Okay. So this is just all part of what's happening down there at the school and the project? That's, like I said, separate from the switchgear then?
Yep.
And this is something that the city owes? I mean, it's not anything they can put on their bill?
No, they're getting billed.
The city's going to pay for it, but we're going to bill the school
Less 10%.
Less 10%.
Because we're keeping some.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
Less 10% to trade in basically.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
So the school's going to pay everything except 10% of that,
which I think is, takes off $5,500.
Okay. So you'll be receiving that back?
Yep.
All right, any other questions on the motion? Hearing and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. Carried with all ayes. All right, moving on to our agenda item number six, banners. Consider approval of installing the 38 senior banners on light poles. I would entertain a motion, this is a carryover from last time. The council didn't approve hanging banners. Got a lot of input, we could back on here again to consider it at this point in time. So, I would entertain a motion to approve or not the senior banner hanging.
Just point of order quick, wouldn't we have to rescind that original vote in order to bring it forward again?
I suppose the motion could be motion to rescind the prior vote and do this if it's different.
I'd do one at a time.
Okay.
I mean, just as a suggestion, for a minute, more than anything.
Sure.
So we have to make an A and B then?
So I would entertain a motion to rescind the prior decision to not approve hanging banners on light poles.
I'll make a motion to rescind, rescind the old vote of the banners.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion on that? That would put it to be basically then no action then, to rescind the non-approval of before. Any discussion on that? All in favor of rescinding?
Wait, 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 clarify that again?
This would be to rescind our, our not, the council's not approving hanging the banners from last, the last meeting.
So rescind both?
So then, then, then it would, there would be, at that point in time, no decision on the banners, and then we would go to make a decision. So all in favor of rescinding the prior action, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed say aye.
And I'm abstaining.
Oh, that's right.
The reason being, just so the public knows you weren't here for last meeting?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So that prior action is rescinded. So now I would entertain a motion to approve or not hang banners.
I'll make a motion to approve the 38 senior banners being hung on the light poles.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
So where are we at today then with, from that, we rescinded the motion? So where are we at with, are we, have we hung them? Are they coming, or what's?
We haven't hung them. We need to make a decision if we're going to approve hanging them. They, there's been discussion, but no action yet at this point in time, so if the council approves hanging them, they'll get hung. If the council doesn't approve hanging them, they won't.
But she's got them ordered now.
Did she order them?
I thought they're here.
They're here.
Oh, okay.
And they're the same size as they were?
Large.
Large, yeah, and I think we're going to have to go with, we're going to have to be consistent with what size that we have that is conducive to what you can do.
The stuff we're putting up, the stuff I'm putting up to hold the banners up now is like permanent, so, not permanent, but
If approved.
It's not easily moved, so.
Yes.
But, yeah, we can.
So it sounds like they've been ordered, I wasn't aware that they were ordered, but so if the council would not approve hanging them, they wouldn't get hung even though they're ordered.
So what kind of a cost are you looking at for what you had to order to hang them top and bottom?
Oh, I think it was 300 bucks.
That's it? For all 38 of them?
300 a banner, or?
Uh-huh.
300 a banner?
Yeah.
For all banners?
Because you just needed the banding to reattach.
Just needed the banding and the clips, and then I did get a tool, another tool, so two of us could, or two people would be banding at the same time.
Okay. And Premgar and Sullivan will help?
Premgar for sure. I haven't heard back yet, so now from Sullivan, but.
I do think that needs to be something that is said o' to for future years, that this is going to be something that is for seniors and all of our communities, that the towns need to come together and help.
And they have the last couple of years, I know that.
Premgar's been here the last.
Mm-hmm, two years for sure, haven't they?
Two for sure, yeah.
Yeah, if you ask them. Was there any discussion about making the banners smaller than they were last year?
I mean, I, I guess I gave my opinion.
Well, evidence was not taken.
So I get, I have a couple of comments as usual. I think the council made exactly this right decision last time when they voted on this. Because they're, the school, in my opinion, are the ones that dropped the ball. Why didn't they have this money budgeted? Why didn't they have this project set up and ready to go? So now they're asking the city to absorb that cost. And in our budgetary process, we don't have that money. So therefore, we're doing a kind of free gratis. And what happens next time when we have somebody else come around and want to do whatever next project? And we don't have it in the budget? Are we going to say, well, that's okay, we'll just afford it? And that's, you know, these little things turn into bigger things as time goes forward. And again, I would just say, I think the council did the exact right thing because it wasn't in our budget. And if they want to, if the school district wants to support it, then they should come forward with the money. Because we not only have material, but we got time to put them up, plus equipment to put it up. So it's just not a $300 bill. It's much more than that. So I think as a council, we just have to keep that in mind. And in the future, I mean, last comment. At the beginning of our budgeting process, everyone has opportunity to come in and address the council if they want some sort of financial assistance or whatever. So I would encourage the school district, if somebody's listening, that you come to that meeting, $60 is budgeted, or at least present them so that they could be budgeted and make this project work. And there's, then it's done, so.
From my understanding, though, the school is actually kind of washed their hands of this after two years.
They want, they want no part of it.
Yep, they won't have nothing to do with it.
So it's basically between John's gallery, Michelle's own, that has contacted the parents of the seniors to see if they would like to purchase these banners. And then the city, the city of Polina would, would hang them up. So it doesn't have anything to do with the school. It's between John's and, and the.
And somebody else.
Yeah.
I did talk to Wade, and he said if they would be willing to help out in some way financially if, if we did approve it and get it. He said they would, I mean, we could present them with whatever, and as long as it seemed fair, he would, I'm sure, get it approved through their council, so.
Well, and I think the only reason we kind of said no was because all your straps and everything, you had to take down off your poles. So we had nothing to attach the banners to. So that was our basic reason for saying we couldn't.
If we wanted to move, change the size of the banners.
Right. With the winds and stuff last year.
That would have probably been a problem.
Right. You'd have been okay. Because you've done it for four years, wasn't it? $2,200.
Since 2020.
This is the fifth year?
Well, this would be the sixth. Because it was 120, it was the first year, right?
20.
120, I see. Four was five.
Okay.
So we've done it for five years. And I love them. They're beautiful, they're very nice. So I just don't think it should be the city's sole responsibility. Right, because the city guys are doing it, which has been nice if the other towns have helped.
Yeah.
But they got those expenses too.
Yeah, that's right, they're still paying their guys, yeah. But I do agree with Denny that it should be, and either that or Michelle comes in and tells us what she's doing, when she's doing.
Well, I think that.
That's an ongoing fact.
Yes, if this is going to be approved for every year, then she's going to have to come well in advance for.
So we know about it.
Yeah.
So we know it's a definite, and I'm sure it probably will be, but we never know. We should know previous to, a week before the school graduation.
Maybe if we get through this year, we can talk with the school and see if we can get anything worked out to where it's not solely our financial responsibility.
Sounds good.
I mean, as far as labor and, you know.
Because it takes you quite a while to do it. I don't know, I think some years you had more than 38, though, didn't you?
Yeah, I think you had around 50 before.
I thought so, too.
Well, they're, believe if they're ordered, they're printed. If that's the case, then, you know, my opinion would be do it this time and then look at it again and decide at the next time if we're going to do it or not. And, and make sure that we know ahead of time that we can make that decision. I guess I'm, I mean, what's done is done, I guess. I don't think we should spend the money or the labor to do it, but it's, the banners are here.
So we have a motion and a second to approve, right? Is anybody that wants, based on the discussion, anybody want to make any amendments to the motion? Put in any kind of other decision points, items, et cetera?
Yeah, because I think those decisions will need to be made after, after this.
Where we can all come together and. I guess let Kelly talk to the school and see what's what they think.
We just need to come during our budgeting process.
Right. And maybe kind of keep track this time, how much time and stuff is actually being spent.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
It would be beneficial if people are very for something, they would show up to meetings.
They're here, right. Mm-hmm, yeah.
For the meetings and not after the decision has been made.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be done that way. Let us know where the thoughts are.
Excellent point.
Yep. So.
Okay, any other questions or discussion items, or council rates of votes? Hearing, no comments? I presume you are. All in favor of the motion which is to approve hanging the banners, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. Carry. We'll move on to item number seven, fire department 28E agreements. Michelle, you want to explain where these are at?
So.
I vote yes.
Yes.
All ayes.
The 28E agreements have already been preferably approved by the townships so they can put it into their budget for July 1. So they'll be signed later, later on in May. They're just looking for approval.
So was there an increase, Michelle?
A little increase.
Percentage wise on the.
Percentage wise, I don't know.
You know, it's like, it's five, looks like they're all five, 25 per section.
Right.
I think there were 500 last year.
So we're, at this point, we're trying to get a little bump every year, I would assume, right? With the expenses of the fire station and all that.
I think they kind of decide that in that January meeting, don't they?
They do.
The, when all the townships get together at Premgar. Should have known Jeanne and I had gone already with Ryan a couple of years ago. And I think you went, did you go this year?
I didn't go this year, I went last year.
You went last year, okay.
So I would entertain a motion for approval of the 28E agreements with the townships?
I will make a motion to approve the 28E agreement with the townships.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Hearing and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. Carry. All right, item number eight, stump removal bids.
Yep, we have two bids, one from Ryan Carlson, one from Dane Christensen. Ryan's does include cleanup and reseeding. Dane's does not. And I spoke to Dane, and he doesn't have the time to, to clean up and reseed.
I'll move that we accept Ryan Carlson's vote for removal of stumps in the city of Polina as directed by staff.
My second thought.
Can this be like a for this year type of deal? Because since I've given Ryan that list, I've cut down three more trees.
He bid on to date though, right? Would you, okay.
Yeah, to date last week.
He bid on to date, not including the last three, you're sorry.
So you'll have a bid on whatever extra there is?
But he reseeds it all, huh? Which is nice, that is very nice.
That's good, gets rid of all the chips and it's awesome.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept Ryan Carlson's bid for the stump removal, reseeding, cleanup and reseeding. Any other discussion or questions?
I just want to make sure that Kelly's comfortable with the way we're proceeding here.
Good.
Good enough.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. Carry. Okay, hanging baskets. Michelle?
Yeah, these are the four, the four corners. Faye will do them again, Sam Price did them last year.
And they were beautiful.
Yeah, they were.
Even the guys liked them. Kelly didn't like watering them. No, but Randy does that. Mostly, I think, doesn't he, pretty well?
Okay, so I would entertain a, did we have another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the hanging flower baskets on the four corners of Main Street and Broadway Street.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. Carry. City Hall, discussion of the brick wall, et cetera.
Now, we talked about just getting rid of the brick wall and just landscaping to the sidewalk. Budget wise, that's our best option. The brick can go to the dump.
You guys can take the brick down.
We, we can take that all out.
And the light pole, we talked about putting at the.
New fire station.
New fire station.
Okay.
Faye is still, still needing hours, Faye Dangler is still needing hours for her master gardener. So she would like to help with the landscaping. She wanted to get started already, but I told her the whole lot until we knew what we were doing. So it's something that we need to get rolling so she can get in there and get that cleaned up. And I don't want her to clean it up and then us mess it up again.
So the city will cover product costs and then she'll do the work, or is that?
I think so, she did it last year.
That's kind of with the hanging baskets, too? She doesn't have labor in there?
Yeah.
And then, and we've got money in the budget for just overall maintenance and landscaping that we cover?
Yeah, and I, I think we discussed about maybe having a team bonding, council bonding, and maybe some volunteers and just get it done.
I'd be willing.
Oh, my bad.
Literally.
That surgery's going to stop.
I'd need to try to.
She's chicken now.
No, I don't think that's going to work in anything.
So what about the commemorative plaque that's on there for Frank Snows? How do we handle that?
That's what we were talking about, the EMS building.
We'd go with the whole plaque.
I think that would be nice.
Yes, I do, too.
And you have a nice place to store the pole and the plaque.
So do you, I know you said, did we want somebody else to give her some ideas, you think? Or do you feel she's, feel she has enough?
I think she has enough.
Just for landscaping it?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was going to say that guy from Premgar is just, well, he's, seems like he's getting going with stuff, too, but we can kind of see what she comes up with. Because we have to approve it all, right?
Well, I don't know. If we approve, knocking this down, then we're just going to move forward.
Okay.
And then what do we do with the sign?
Yeah, we're going to have to get a temporary, we talked about getting a temporary signage for now until we can come up with something that's nice, something that on the front of this building in the front of the lounge room.
Right.
That way it's, because even.
I would actually like something that says City Hall.
Right.
Because that city community building that it says now confuses so many people.
Yeah, they're still looking for City Hall, yeah.
We talked about, you know, vinyl lettering is pretty inexpensive, maybe on, just at least for now on the front door, have something that says City Hall and lounge room on the two doors. That way people can, if they're driving by, looking for it, they can find it.
Maybe even put it up in the top one dozer.
Yeah, because if they're actually seeing it close enough there, I don't think they're driving by. I think you need something outside.
Yeah. And, and that's something I can look into and...
Right.
Bring that to council.
Okay.
Some ideas.
We were talking about maybe reusing the letters that are on that, let's say, community building and put them, you know, in the lounge room and, and just get some City Hall for up there.
You could leave Paulina, but just put City Hall underneath it.
Wouldn't it be wise to have all the lettering and what we're gonna do out there before we start on the project?
Well, it's our, the bricks falling apart and people are actually, have actually come in here and have commented how bad it looks.
I know it looks bad, but I'm just thinking if we did it all as one project, it would be done and we wouldn't have to worry about temporary lettering or that.
And I can look into something tomorrow and see if, I mean, it shouldn't be hard to find some lettering or something.
I looked too and it's, it's still stable. I pulled on a number of different things. It just looks bad.
So you're wanting vinyl, or you want like, what you're actually going to be having?
Done, done deal.
I don't think that's...
Want it done?
Something that Hirschman would be able to do?
Council have to decide what they, what kinda budget they wanna spend on it. You guys might decide that you wanna do that full and spend, so probably a couple thousand dollars or whatever it costs. Or for now, do vinyl lettering, you know, again, from a cost standpoint. That'll be, that's your decision.
I mean, if we take that down in the next couple of weeks and I maybe get a few different options together for the next council meeting?
That sounds good. Before we do a temporary.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And let's do something really nice.
Yeah.
Because we have really a nice building.
Right.
Sure.
No, I think so too.
So this particular item that Michelle had us put on the agenda was removing the brick and landscaping, not the signage. So that's what you're voting on tonight with the...
Yeah, so we'll just get that started.
If you do, we could do a motion to remove the brick and landscaping.
We'll just take care of that and not do anything further until he gets some prices.
So I would entertain a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion to remove the brick wall and start landscaping.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say aye? Carry. Let's see, airport, so Brian?
Yeah, I don't think Brian's gonna make it. Like, this is something that we're gonna have to discuss at another meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because he'd be in charge of getting that coming.
Is our airport directory?
So they can't really discuss it, huh?
No, he said he could call in, but for something like this, I don't think that that's... I think he needs to be here.
Yeah, I agree.
So is the council okay with, since it's on the agenda, is the council okay with deferring this item eleven to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Gotta have a motion on the floor if you gotta table it. Yeah. It would be just not, not doing the agreement at all. Not a motion on it. Right. Exactly.
Okay.
So, future meeting topic. All right, item number twelve, nuisance violation. Michelle?
Okay. I've put this on your desks. It's a little bit of, like, there's what the nuisance actually is. And then the abatement process. And as I was reading the abatement process, I actually don't think Vanessa has been granted an actual hearing. Because the hearing is when the council makes the decision. And no one has, when Vanessa was here, a few, a few meetings ago, she addressed the council, but there were no decisions made.
Right.
So I don't think she's technically been granted a hearing.
Yeah, there was. There was a decision made.
Well, there wasn't.
Yeah, there was.
There was a decision.
That they had till fairtime, end of the fair.
It was talked about, but it was never...
We talked about, we never gave a motion on it, did we? There was no motion.
Okay. Not quite how I remember.
We had a couple different thoughts on it, and that was one of them. But as far as I know too, there was nothing decided. Because wasn't, was that our last meeting? Twenty-third?
There was a couple.
Was it the one before that?
Yeah.
Before that, yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying that anytime we issue a nuisance to somebody...
Yeah, right here it says, any person ordered to abate a nuisance may have a hearing with the council as to whether the nuisance exists. The request for a hearing must be made in writing, and she did request to speak to the council and deliver to the clerk within the time stated in the notice, or will be conclusively presumed that nuisance exists and abated as ordered. The hearing will, will be before the council, at a time and place fixed by the coun, fixed by the council. The findings of the council will be conclusive, and if a nuisance is found to exist, it shall be ordered abated within a reasonable time under the circumstances. We cannot do that.
So the, considering moving forward with the nuisance, that, that topic is on here, so our next step would be set in hearing? So that, that would be that, you know, moving forward?
Right. And at that time, the council needs to make a decision on what we're gonna do.
So our next step? What, hang on. What we're gonna do, does that mean move forward with the plan, or does that mean?
Whatever.
Go on.
You have to make a decision.
You have to make a decision.
Do you want ducks, don't want ducks?
So that's what it gets down to?
Right.
Okay.
What we're gonna do?
Basically, are we going to amend our ordinances from current or not? Would be part of that decision. And if not, then there would be, we're in a mess. And if so, then we would... How to deal with it? Decide what that, what that would be. So, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing as the next step of this nuisance.
Was there?
No, that's, that's okay.
Was there, was there a request for hearing? What I understand, was there a request for hearing?
Vanessa asked if she could address the council.
That, which happened two times, two meetings ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Did she request a hearing?
She didn't.
I think she technically requested a hearing.
So, so we would approve a hearing only if a hearing was, and what does it say to request a hearing?
Um, request for hearing must be made in writing and delivered to the clerk within the time stated in the notice. And she did.
She didn't request one, though, did she?
She just came here and talked about it. She wanted to talk to the council.
So now she'll need to request.
So we can't act on setting the hearing because we haven't had, we haven't received the request to...
Yeah, so you'll have to put in a request for hearing. Okay.
So as of currently, we haven't gotten a request for hearing. So what would our, what would the council's next step options be where we sit right now?
That, that, I would say that, that the nuisance exists.
And in the next step, I'm dealing with that, if the council chose to do, would be?
Abating.
Abating of the, of the nuisance.
Have you, she said her, her neighbors are good, but have you heard anything coming through the city?
I haven't heard any complaints. I haven't heard anything, actually.
You got, okay. That's, I just wondered if you heard anything, one way or the other. Anybody else heard anything?
Was it in the, was it in the notice that she could request a hearing, or?
No, it was not. No.
So is that something we need to change in our processing?
But she had copy of this, the ordinance?
No, not, I'll, I'll...
So that's, I mean, that's kinda where I have a problem. There's not, in the notice, there was...
Right.
She was not aware that she could request a hearing.
Right, and just to, because Alana's handling the nuisances, and just to back Alana, she reviewed these with, with Thor, and he was fine with it. So it, I mean, I think it was just missed by everybody.
Okay, so now she can request a hearing. Okay, great.
I, I put the letter that she... was sent. And she was given so much time to get, to rehome the ducks. It wasn't mentioned that she could ask for a hearing. Okay.
So we're just kicking a couple steps back and we can now move forward?
Sure. Like I said, Alana's going to that seminar, so she'll...
It's a lot. It's a lot dealing with nuisances. There's a lot of different, different things, a verbiage.
Our rules. I forget what date it is. It's later on in May, later on this month.
Like in Des Moines, or?
No, it's in Mason City.
Oh, okay.
Who was, any, like, anybody else around the area that would be interested in going to? Have you checked with some of your other towns?
I'm not sure.
So what kinda time limit do we want to put on here for her to submit her request for hearing?
She had to receive the...
The notice.
The notice?
Gotta kinda go back to the beginning.
Yeah.
Received the notice and request a hearing and...
Yeah, so this was dated February twentieth, and she was given till April first. So we're looking at over a month.
But again, it doesn't request a hearing, right?
No. But I'm just saying, we're looking at a month to rehome, so I think we're gonna have to do the same, I think we should do the same premise, but in here, say that she has the right to a hearing.
Right.
I agree.
And with it being in the May already, I think she should be given at least thirty days. After we send the notice.
Our ordinance doesn't say any other timeframe, so we can set, kinda set that. Okay. So is there an action that we need to take here to?
I don't think so.
No.
All right. We're down to reports. Or I could do it under counsel too, that's why I could go ahead. Okay. Kelly and Michelle?
I don't have much. It seems like it was, we just had a council meeting.
We can ask.
Kelly and I will be gone Wednesday, Thursday. To Sioux Falls, where Marius.
In Sioux Falls. And then you're gonna, have you checked with them at all about the poles and the lights?
They have not gotten that yet.
Are you gonna talk to them maybe that, I don't know, if you have time that day? See them?
Yeah.
See if we can get some prices, maybe?
Yeah.
And funding?
Yeah, and money. Well, I hear they're pretty good at helping you out.
Good, anything else?
No, I just mentioned, we did shingle the concession stand. I don't know if I brought that up.
You did. Yep, you did.
And thanks to Sweeney, they donated.
Yep.
We've been working on doing electric, getting the new transformer put in at the school. We did have a sewer repair, and I did give you guys some information late today.
I emailed everybody.
About that.
Yep.
We ended up having to dig two holes in the road and it's all, it's all clay and it's, I mean, we took out probably two volleyball-sized tree root balls out of there. And, and that is a sewer that we, we're there probably once a month jetting it out.
What does this add about, Kelly?
It's on... The Mick, on Mickley Street, and it actually, the one-man hole, everything north of there is plastic all the way to the library. And I don't know why, back in ninety-two or ninety-three when they did that, they decided to just leave that last block, I'm not sure. But, yeah, from, like, a fourth of that block in, there's a manhole, and then the rest of the block down is all clay. And, yeah, we've, and I think that's a lot of our problem. We get a lot of rain, we get a lot of infiltration in there. And that, there's like, uh, there's a manhole there that, where it collects the rainwater, and that thing always gets full and backed up, and it can't get out fast enough. And we have a lot of water getting into our sewer, I believe, from when we get the rain because of the clay pipes.
Sure. So that's what the project is all about, is to remove those clay tile in that particular... Then is that sanitary sewer or storm sewer?
Sanitary.
Okay. And how is it that the rainwater gets into the sanitary sewer?
Well, clay pipes aren't sealed.
Okay.
They're not, like, you have, when you have a plastic pipe that's sealed and glued and...
Okay. Plus they've been in the ground how many, number of years?
Right. I mean, if, if we're getting that many tree roots in there, my guess is it's, yeah.
Gotta be fixed.
Is there a way to determine, is that the only, so that's about three-quarters of a block, Nickley, just north of Bertha. Are there other streets like that in town as well, or they just haven't, we haven't had the problems?
I mean, we just recently got the camera and have kinda been using it, and this was the fir, second time we used it, and, yeah. I mean, it's kinda nice to know if it's, if it's actually a city problem, if it's homeowner, you know? Because our sewer jet will, when it goes down the main, it will suck stuff out of their, out of their service line, and then, I mean, it just looks like it's a city problem, and really it's not.
But this, you know, is city.
Yeah.
Have you, any of the guys been looking at testing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Josh is gonna sign up for testing, and I'm looking for classes for both of them to go to.
Okay.
This is for sewer water?
For sewer, yeah.
Certification. Are we at the time of year where hydrants need to be flushed? Did we ever get all of them flushed last year, or do we still have?
We have a, yeah, we get them flushed every year. We have a sheet that we go by and then we do exercise all the valves too. The main valves. And once, once we get a set time, I know Josh usually does that, and he's probably here this week or beginning of next week, he's gonna start painting lines too, so...
Does that mean that Trent's gonna do a bunch more sweeping before? Okay, anything else?
Picked on a few trees. I did, after quite a few phone calls, get ahold of the DOT about the bike path. And the guy I talked to that I believe is somewhat in charge of it has a meeting tomorrow, and he said he's gonna give me a better timeline when that'll be fixed. And I asked if I could do anything just to brace that up or anything, and he said I'm not allowed to touch it for liability reasons, so if people could please stay off it, because I feel like it could go at any time, and, I mean, we keep putting up barricades and cones and they keep getting taken down, and I believe people just keep going across there, so...
So if it collapses, we're not liable for it? If people are on there?
That means, yeah, yes we are, no we aren't?
Right.
It's not liability.
I don't really know that answer.
Until it comes to.
Is there something more that we can put out there?
Another...
We do have...
Electric fence.
We do have some concrete barricades we could maybe put out there.
That might help, because nails, glass. Somebody gets hurt.
Like, we should do something to reinforce that it's closed?
Maybe we could, yeah, we can do that.
But that's DOT's responsibility, isn't it?
Right.
You'd almost have to call them and say, can we put this, these... Did they put up the current barricades? No.
Maybe one of them.
And hopefully they can at least tomorrow get a timeframe of when they're planning on coming.
And ask them about this too, that, you know? Because telling them there's just, weather's too nice, they're all walking out there.
I've expressed that to many people, so...
Yeah.
And we did get our sonar done out at the lagoons, and we, we should have all those results back here soon.
Good. Switchgear project update, where are we at with, what are the steps left to finish that up and that are gonna be done, what with other...
We have some feeders we have to switch over, which will, at least one of them for sure will take an outage, but we plan on doing that on the July second and July sixteen outages that NIPCO is gonna be doing. And we're probably gonna be doing some other work in town while those outages are going And we're probably gonna be doing some other work in town while those outages are going on, so if people see something about, the outage is not a city city work that's being done, it's NIPCO's work that's being done.
You just have to be there. They do it.
Yeah.
The 2nd and the 16th of July, correct?
Yep.
What about our lagoon project, is that with King or was that, nothing happened?
Didn't work.
Meaning?
What do you think?
That's in, Beck is still responding to King. Oh, okay.
To get it done?
To, yeah. So it's all there.
Did you, you know, when you, when you did that one testing, did they tell you how much was left? Did that tell you that sonar or whatever?
Yeah. You know what, I should have those back by, and be able to explain them to you by next, for next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, a lot going on, it's spring.
Yeah.
That's awesome. All right, next, I don't have anything else, but, but we'll, we'll discuss, say, council comments? I just, uh, wondered about the other homes that we've got of nuisance violations, like, did you hear me? Up to date on those? Like the east, Broadway one?
We move forward with the attorney's, um, recommendation.
Which was?
Which is to, um-
Have someone go inside and look?
Administrative search warrant to look inside to see what would, what it would take to make that house livable.
Was it for that one and also the one on the south?
What is this story on that house, I guess I never heard.
On the south end?
Yeah, the 412, 412, yeah, south.
Yeah, somebody bought it and never had utilities turned on or?
And don't live in-
And they've never lived in it.
Well, they painted it, you know, they did somewhere.
Florida or something.
Yeah, I think Florida is what Alana said.
So it's, did it go back to the mortgage company then, or?
No.
They're still owners.
So what's, what's, where's that one at?
Same, same as the one on Broadway.
Administrative, okay.
And they've, they've been filed, they're just waiting for the judge, no.
Okay. As a suggestion or something you might ask, or maybe, um, cover with Thor is in the past, uh, the city's had the opportunity for salvage rights for those homes. And then of course, uh, if there is any salvage value, then that can go back against the city's cost for that. So that might be something that you wanna, might wanna ask Thor about and see if we can do something like that or not. Cause I know one person that probably appreciate looking, so.
Do we know him? Maybe you should tell him, I don't think they know about the one that was here behind the, in the alley there that you went to court for.
Well, I think we talked about it.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, did we? Well, Daddy wasn't here though.
Uh, there was another, they were, they were, they were gonna receive a seven hundred fifty dollar municipal infraction for not cleaning up the backyard. They were given, they were given extended time to, um, come up with some sort of storage option. Cause they don't have a garage, so whether it be privacy fence or a little garden shed or something to, um, to put the, those fires and the lawnmower, that kind of stuff inside. They weren't given a seven hundred fifty dollar fraction.
Okay, and where, what, uh, location was this stuff?
Um, it's in, what's the address, what is the address?
Ruttledge.
Ruttledge, um-
Alley, the 200 block of Ruttledge.
Yeah, it's like if you, if you go to Presbyterian Church and you turn left at the alley, yeah, it's long.
Four Els is down.
It's right across from the old playground that I school.
But the backyard's been that forever.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Anything else, council, comments, questions?
Did we say a thank you to Sweeney's then? Word of thank you? Okay.
Is that one of your to-do list?
You told him banks on the phone. But a nice written one would be nice.
I was just saying, cause I got a bunch of thank yous that I can-
Oh, there you go.
I probably got some too.
You can coordinate there.
Okay, there you go.
Awesome. Okay, anything else, council? Committee reports? I'm not aware of any committee reports tonight. Departments, police, anything Nate? Fire, ambulance, library, airport are not here, so.
I did speak briefly with Amber, she stopped in and gave the new, um, gave me the new ambulance bylaws. So those will be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Great. So they've updated them?
Can you get those out early instead of Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Cause I know it's a number of pages.
What is?
Fire continues to work on their bylaws. Standard operating procedures. Okay. Item number 14.
I will be adjourned in a second.
One second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say aye? Carry it. And that, five, one, six, point seven.